...planning grant, West Highway 2570.
I'd like to introduce John Potten, Potten, sorry. Just call him John. He's with the sibling, Mary Parker, Gretchen Smith. They've been working with me over the past several months on this corridor development plan for West End. He's got a short presentation. And you can see back behind the council there are some of the board's film of the discussion. I'd like to encourage all of you after the meeting to go and take a look at them. There is some feedback that will tell you about how to keep your feet up in the hallway. Oh, yeah. I'm filming, so yeah. Go.
Well, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is John Houghton. I'm with the, as Gary mentioned, with an architecture, engineering, and planning firm, Gretchen Smith. We're headquartered in Nashville, Tennessee, but we have offices in Knoxville, Chattanooga, Memphis, and actually 25 other cities around the southeast. About 900 employees. We work on transportation corridor plans throughout the southeast, particularly in Tennessee with T-DOT. And this study is funded in part from a community transportation planning grant that the state gave to the city with some matching funds from the city. So what I wanted to do today, I'll just look over here, is give you a quick overview of the project, talk a little bit about the goals and objectives that have been developed so far, talk about a corridor development scenario, and then next steps. I'll try to be pretty brief, and if you have any questions, please stop me as we move along. In terms of the project overview, the corridor extends from the bypass, the future bypass intersection with the highway, all the way to U-411, US 411. And you can see it there highlighted in that image. We all know commercial corridors, they come in all sorts of shapes and sizes. As you can see, over time, you know, it's all those individual decisions add up to the future corridor. It can be driveway cuts, it can be signage, it can be new streets and development. What we try to do, and when I think you have a great opportunity here in Newport, is you have an incredible amount of redevelopment potential or development potential along the corridor. So it's really an opportunity in this study to put together a game plan or roadmap for how you want it to develop over time. If done right, or done well, the corridor can include streetscapes like the one here in the upper left, it can attract retail and other restaurants, it could even include residential development. One thing I should mention is that when we look at a corridor, we look at the properties along the corridor, but also we go out 1,000 feet on each side to make sure that we understand the relationship between the properties facing the highway and those right behind it. So really where we are right now is asking, what is your vision for the corridor? Again, we're here at the very beginning, as Gary mentioned, of the process. What we want to do is find out what you want, and then try to translate that into the strategies and tools that can help achieve your vision. So again, we're here in Phase Two, looking at best practices. That's the board up here behind you. Our goals and objectives, which is the one with the dots back here, and then also having, of course, this first public meeting. Our schedule is, we're right here at this red arrow, is after this meeting to come back in late June with some concrete ideas and strategies for how we would implement, or how we could implement your vision for the corridor. So based on the feedback we get tonight, and also the direction from Gary and others, we'll go ahead and try to put together a draft plan, a final border plan, a Task Five, that we can present to you in late June. Does anybody have any quick questions about sort of the overall project overview? If not, I can keep going ahead.
I had a question earlier about the bypass.
Yes.
And what the timing is for that project.
I think, Gary, do you have, if you could provide an update? We heard a little bit from Troy with T-DOT, who was here earlier. The state's getting ready to issue their three-year work program, which is basically the road project list, and I think that's coming out here shortly, but...
Their meeting now didn't forge nothing official, but it looks like we might actually end up... The RPO has ranked it number one two years in a row, and it looks like upon the three-year project list, we might actually be at the top of that this time. So nothing official yet, just rough figures. You go to bed.
The only question I'll, I'll compare in pretty easy taste of earth would be, the properties out through the corridor are piecemeal in the city and out of the city, just like a checkerboard.
Yes.
I'm sure you saw that in your studies.
Yes.
How does that impact what we can or can't do as far as going across a piece of property that is not in the city? I realize that someone asked me that question a little earlier, and my knee-jerk answer was, would it be on the right of way? Is that correct? I mean, as long as it's on the right of way, we can still do the improvements across the property, even though that particular piece is not in the city?
If it is within the right of way, that's T-DOT.
That's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure I wasn't telling anybody wrong.
Right, now that's correct. And what we've talked about, actually you can see here on this map, those black outlines, those are the properties that are within the city, and then the ones that are not in the, not with the black boundaries are the ones that are in the county. So you're right, it's sort of hopscotch and round. What we've done in the past, and T-DOT has already spoken with Gary a little bit about this, to the group, T-DOT has been putting together what they call corridor management agreements. So when there are multiple jurisdictions, county, city, that are on a highway corridor, they're trying to get those jurisdictions to work together with the state. So they put together what they call is a corridor management agreement. Actually, our firm developed the first ones down in Bradley County, and then up over in Wilson and Sumner County in middle Tennessee. And it's really just to get that game plan and say, hey, this is what we all agree to in terms of that right of way. And then maybe even, what do we think those future land uses should be? So even though the county doesn't have zoning, they could say, well, that'd be our policy to encourage that. So we'll work with future developers to try to encourage it, even though it wouldn't be regulatory. The city with zoning can say, we'll make it regulatory through our zoning ordinance. So there's a, you end up with sort of a hybrid or mix or match strategy. Good, great question, thank you. Any other general questions about the project before I push ahead? If not, I will do so. So goals and objectives, really three sources for that. One is the existing conditions and trends. I'll touch on those a little more here in a second. Best practices, again, which are highlighted on that board, and then community input. Again, these goals and objectives really need to be yours, they're not ours, so the more we can hear from you, the better direction we'll have. One of the things we wanted to highlight with existing conditions and trends was demographics. Something in our early meetings with the city was, how do you retain or attract young families, young people, and even retirees, sort of either end of the spectrum, to stay or move to Newport? So one of the things we looked at was even just the population pyramid, it's called. And you can see the different age groups are even within five-year increments, male on the blue, female in the pink. You can see how it's changed, the shape of it, from 2000 to 2017. So in 2000, you had a pretty big, thick group from age 25 to 54, your typical working age years. And you can see how it's starting to shrink a little bit as you get to 2017. So if you look at the actual numbers, it's about a 25% decrease in that working, that prime working age population of 25 to 54. So I think just echoing what we heard early on in the meetings with the city, you know, how do you again track sort of that working age group to live in the community? Another thing we looked at is what we call redevelopment potential. We essentially look at different parcels, and wherever the land value is greater than the land, than the improvement value, that's an opportunity for redevelopment. And so when we do that, a quick study, it's roughly 289 acres, or 62% of the corridor. Again, a tremendous opportunity for laying out the game plan or the roadmap that you want. It's not like, you know, the corridors are even built out, and now you're trying to go back and retrofit it. You have a lot of opportunity in front of you. The third area that we just wanted to highlight was traffic, safety, and access management. Over the most recent five-year period, 2014 to 2018, 167 crashes, just on the corridor, not all those other ones in surrounding streets. And one thing you look at there is the average driveway spacing. It's about 180 feet from Green Valley Road over the Caroline Zone. And the reason that's important is, the more driveways you have, the more traffic congestion you have, and the more safety issues or crashes. So again, as development comes, how does the city want to handle and manage that, is another question. So with some of those ideas or questions on the table, we looked at best practices, and there are really five best practices. We can talk about order plan and design, it's building strong centers, having clearly defined gateways, well-connected paths and circulation so people can get around easily, have a flexible framework for growth. So yes, you may say you want commercial here, office here, or whatever land use, but you want to give flexibility for developers to come in and work within that overall framework. And then finally, memorable places. How do you make this a place where people want to not just pass through, so coming on the bypass, coming through, and either going down 411 or towards the interstate, but how do you get them to stay and visit? So that's one of the challenges to do. Lots of tools and strategies, everything from land use to building sizes and setbacks. Those are two things that usually the developer more or less drives. But then there are all these things that are in the public right of way, to your comment earlier, whether it's walkways and bike ways, parking and access management, streetscapes and signage, parks and plazas, that you can again start to set the game plan for today. Some of the things we heard early on in community input was maximize growth near the I-40 interchange. Consider the potential for new residential development north of the highway. So we'll see here in a second the map that shows that. Make the corridor an attractive place to visit and walk, and attract and keep young women, young working age people and families, as well as retirees. So again, we're here today to get your thoughts and comments, so if you have other ones you'd like to add, we'd love to hear that. I guess maybe I'll pause there. Are there any comments or questions anybody has in terms of overall goals and vision for the corridor that you'd like us to...
How many years do you think it's going to be? I mean, I don't know what Gary said, while ago, I know we've been on this thing for several years. How many years do you think it'll be before we get started on this?
On the bypass itself? Well, they're, actually, it's an Improve Act project. You know, it was on the state when they did the Improve Act and they did the gas tax increase. It was one of those projects.
Right.
And I think all those projects need to be led by...
2030.
By 2030. So they have to be led to construction by 2030, so it's going to be over the next 10, five to 10 years, I would say. So just quickly on some goals and objectives, these are on that board with the dots right behind you, sir. Focus more intensive development near I-40 and the future bypass. Is that important, less important, or more important? Provide safe bicycle pedestrian facilities. Create a unified design theme, again, you can do that through street trees, lighting, signage. Ensuring the land use policies and development standards support the vision for the corridor. So in the case of the county, where you don't have zoning, there may be more policy. In the case of the city, where you have zoning, there may be more development standards. Protecting and preserving existing and planned neighborhoods. Establishing a connected street network. One of the things we try to do is encourage parallel streets developed as development occurs, so that all the traffic doesn't have to get on Highway 2570, for people to move around and not cause traffic congestion and safety issues. We're developing even new parks and greenways to support growth and development. So finally, just wrapping up, what we did, just to give people something to react to and give us our thoughts, is we developed an initial development scenario. It's largely based on what the existing uses are today. So in the red, you'll see commercial, and the yellow is residential, blue is office and public facilities like churches, and then the orange is a mixed use. So you could have retail residential, retail office, restaurants, real mix of uses in that central area by New Cave Church Road. The thought is, as you get that residential development to the north, maybe you have a new neighborhood center down there that helps complement all that residential development. There's also an idea of trying to make it more walkable or bikeable or bike-friendly. So there's a thick green line, which would be a shared use path, there are smaller green dash lines, which are sidewalks. And you can see how they connect back toward the school and these neighborhoods along Harson Springs Road, and then back up. So you wouldn't have to go through the interchange area itself. Finally, here's just a quick proposed existing, again, it's that board over there. You can see today is 100 feet of right of way. The corridor varies, it shifts. Some places you have as much as 20 feet beyond the curb, with just two feet on the other side, so there's utility pole there. And then it will switch in the other side as you go down the corridor. The thought is, or the question is, what could you do with that 20 feet of right of way beyond the curb? If you want, could you do something like a shared use path where you're walking or biking? You have wide shoulders, could you do something, if you wanted to, on street bicycle facilities where those people are doing bike, longer bike touring? And on the other side, where you only have the two feet, could you over time secure sidewalk easements with new development? And maybe you have a sidewalk, as shown out there, like a five to six foot sidewalk. So again, this is an initial idea. We're wide open for all comments and suggestions and changes, but we wanted to give you something to think about or take a look at. Does anybody have any questions about either of those two slides? Yes, sir.
Now, are all these improvements downtown, are they linked to the bypass being developed or not?
These are not. This, well, it really could happen separately.
So if the bypass takes 50 years to build, it's not directly...
No, you could still pursue this, because like in the example here with the right of way, you have the right, the right of way exists, that extra 20 feet, particularly on one side or another, as you go down the corridor. So you could start to plan with T-DOT, what is the future of that right of way? And the argument, as we were talking earlier, Gary, and so T-DOT represented, about the different multimodal grants that are available today, you know, they can be as much as 95% state-funded, so really great opportunities to get something done, depending on what you want.
How much will this affect the city, though? I mean, you're talking about being in a period of years, most of it being in the county. How does that...
I'm sorry, what was the question?
How does that affect the city that much? Whatever.
Well, I think, I forgot what the percentage is in county and the city. It's roughly half, I would say, of the properties are in the city. And there's a lot you can do, you know, even if you're working with the county, it's really trying to work with the county to set up what you would like to happen on that corridor. Again, the corridor management agreement is a tool you can use, but you can just have conversations with the county about how do you want to see it develop, starting even with what happens in the public right of way. I hope that answers that. And finally, just sort of the mixed use center, you know, what can that look like? This is the New Cave Church Road intersection. You know, you'd have the existing commercial there, but you could ultimately, you know, have things like, make it a little more of a town center, a neighborhood center. You can have sidewalks with street trees, et cetera, in that right of way that's available. Beyond it, you might even pursue apartments, a garden apartments, for example, that could attract younger adults or younger families to live there, and look for opportunities for public space. So with that, just I'll wrap up. Our next steps are to develop a land use plan based on what we've heard from the community, develop a transportation system plans, looking at those parallel roads, different intersections, talk about development standards and guidelines, how you, what you would need to do to your zoning ordinance to make sure that it's working for what you want. We'll hold a second public meeting in late June, and then we'll prepare the final border plan. With that, that finishes the presentation, but I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
You hear comments sometime, the bypass taken away from the city, though?
It can, yes, I agree.
I mean, if everybody's going to bypass the city, then what's going to happen to downtown Newport?
Yeah. No, that's a great point, and that's, there are lots of studies out there that show building a bypass can quote-unquote, like sort of kill downtown and the commercial. I think that's one reason to, when looking at it, is to think about not just commercial the entire way. Sometimes communities overdo zoning for commercial, and then they kill, you know, the older areas. So one thing to consider is to think about, how do we get more residential there? I mean, retail follows rooftops, and so if you can somehow encourage more development, maybe not right up on the corridor, but right behind it, then you can support not only the commercial on the corridor, which is also going to get a lot of business from traffic, but you also don't kill downtown in the process. Yeah, that's a great point, thank you. Anything else, Gary, that I missed?
I will repeat something I said earlier, because the media didn't have their reporter on, so you want to get ready. I'm going to do it more time. Can you go back to the map?
Sure.
So the beauty of this whole thing is that, you've talked a lot of that, it's there right now, and it's sort of a clean slate. It's like John said earlier, that this is a lot easier than trying to go back and retrofit into what modern development looks like. So this gives us an opportunity to be out ahead and in front of it. What we've come up with so far is just the general, what I say earlier, this is the stuff that the planning nerds like to, that we like to do. So it may not be something that actually works for that in a town, based on the property owners and business owners, so that's why we get the feedback from the public. But otherwise, this is just the first step in trying to grow that area. Because this, that area downtown and Crosby Highway headed toward, beyond those, where Little Springs are our best areas for development and growth, and we want to make sure that we do it right, so that we're not trying to overcome obstacles 20 years down the road. So that's the point of what we're doing. I hope you feel like we've got to start, and we want public input so that we continue on what I think's the right path whenever we present the final product of it. I think it's something we can be proud of, and a good roadmap that we can follow to get where we really need to be. An area that's already going to see some development in the next year, here in half, two years, and then we got to look at using that development as a spark to really grow it and push it. Grow that, but head west further out towards 411, and then east all the way into downtown, and really, really in a good place with where we're developing and growing our residential and commercial areas. Anything you guys want to ask the experts while they're here? Because once they leave, I'm pretty, I'm like 20% knowledge compared to what they...
But they will be back in June, right?
Yes. And you all, of course, have a main line to me about anything with this. If you've got suggestions, recommendations, questions, you can always let me know. And any major developments, I'll, of course, brief the board on it. But yeah, unless, unless we find that dreaded Indian burial ground, I always say we're going to find whenever we're trying to do a project, yeah, we'll come back in June and give them the...
Well, going back to Coach's question, I think that helps us to get this ahead of the bypass. Some people have something to talk about, or bring them into downtown.
Most exciting, we got from the transfer, get hooked up in the coffee shop that I have most exciting. We get in town, that'll have to quit when we figure out bypass.
Danish number one.
A lot of your stress will be removed.
Gary, can I ask a question? The green dot is the start of the corridor. Is that the curve on 2570 past the fire ground? Is that where the new 321 will tie in?
Yes. You see that's that black dash line, the black dash line coming out from the right, that's where the bypass wire is.
Is there anything being discussed with it? I know this is the corridor, but is there anything being discussed from the start of the corridor to the Pigeon River on the bypass when it does come through?
Not as far as this goes, but I've already had early conversations with T-DOT about what that area right there, because that's a whole other set of development that we need to focus on, once that road does come in, because that's your, there's all sorts of commercial and residential development that can happen out there, and all recreation development as well.
That's why I'm asking.
I know.
You know, here's the mother of life.
Yeah. That's an incredible area, where two roads can get here.
Yeah, that road coming in is going to open up a whole new, a whole different, something that wasn't even what they are, long-range park and rec plant, just because of having that opportunity.
And just one, two last things. We'll be here after the meeting, so if you want to ask us anything about the boards or put dots on the boards, we're here. And then we're going to make a, provide an online survey. So for people who are going to be here today, we'll get that out next week, we're good to carry next week, and people can run and give us feedback on that.
Anything else? Questions for the public? If not, we'll close this portion of the public hearing.
Thank you very much.
We'll reconvene.
Roll call by City Recorder, please.
Mayor Roland Dykes.
President.
Vice Mayor Mike Proffitt.
President.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Present.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
Alderwoman Louanna Olinger.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincher.
Here.
Thank you, Tina. We have, assume everyone has had a chance to look through the previous minutes of the last meeting.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hansel caught a typo in the minutes, and we fixed that, and we handed out a fresh page for that, for everybody that had. So I think she already gave your, she'd come back and put it in your book.
Oh, okay, yeah. You did, she did.
And so, but that has been fixed. We've taken care of that, and fixed a fresh page of that, prepared it.
Everybody comfortable that that had been corrected, and had a chance to peruse the minutes? If so, then we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented and amended.
And make a motion to approve it?
Second it.
All right, have a motion on the board to approve the minutes as presented, been properly seconded, will approved by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Proclamations and our recognition of citizens by the mayor. I have none at this time. Communications from the City Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item that we have, I need for you all to set a date for the budget workshop. We have passed out a packet for you all to take with you and to study, that is, the proposed budget for fiscal year 1920, and we would like that you all set a date that we can have a workshop to go over the budget and discuss any changes that you all feel need to be made, or any questions that you have, and just anything pertaining to the budget. And so we would ask that you all take the time to suggest dates that would work, so the mayor can set a date. We would suggest that either the last Tuesday of this month, or the first Tuesday of next month is traditionally when we have those, and it's just whatever works the best for everybody. So we'll work around, it's your pleasure.
Check your work schedule.
And that would be either April 30th, or May 7th, would be those two days.
What's your schedules look like?
I'm good with May 7th.
May 7th is the first Tuesday in May?
Yes.
Are you good with it?
Neither one, no. Okay. I can't do it.
I can't do either day.
It doesn't have to be, that's just traditionally when those have been done. I mean, you can settle whenever you want to.
Well, Mike, is yours work schedule currently?
I am a bit complex on both days.
Okay. Can we do this offline after, after council meeting?
No, sir.
You can't?
Well, I mean, you can schedule it, but we'll have to announce it. Yes, I mean, you don't, I'm sorry, you can schedule it whenever you want, but we'll have to announce it. It's just that this is a good opportunity for them to announce.
We can get together and decide.
I just need to coordinate with Mike, I think. His schedule is the one we're concerned with. Mike, if you can, if you can give us some dates that we could work with.
I hope everybody's flexible with his, and sort of tell him, Mike, whatever you can do, and we'll work with it.
Okay, the other thing, and it's right, and it's hand in hand, we were going to also ask that at same, whenever you decide on when that's going to be, that you have a called meeting in conjunction with that workshop, in other words, during the same night, specifically for the purpose of opening bids for a vehicle for the street department. I'm in the parks, okay, I'm sorry. Okay. But it's strictly for the purpose of opening bids for parks and for the street department. We're just, we're trying to find some timelines here on some issues, and... We're just, we're trying to find some timelines here on some issues and we were wanting to try to get those, we've got them out and we'd like to be able to move on them instead of having to wait all the way until May. Because on vehicles, bids are good to the, they won't hold vehicles for you. When places have vehicles and they'll put a bid in and if somebody else comes in and with the cash in their pocket, they'll drive off with the vehicle. You know, they won't hold a vehicle for you. They'll give you a bid that's good until some other person comes along wanting to buy it. So, there's some concern about maybe a vehicle getting away that, that they're after.
Mike, the only concern, I guess, would be this would be
The same.
Prior to the fiscal years, starting next fiscal year. Is this item already in the capital budget?
Yeah, please, this budget, yes, sir. Yeah, there's no new monies involved. The money, the monies are in this budget.
Okay.
But we were just wanting to have, on the same night, a call meeting and a workshop.
Okay.
So, it would just be whenever y'all work it out, we'll just have to announce it. If that's, if that's to y'all's pleasure.
Okay. It needs to be published out soon.
Yes, sir.
Mike, you have any suggestions?
Yes, I have. Oh, you're talking about Mike.
Yeah, Mike Hansel.
I could do April 23rd. Is that too soon?
I mean, that's, that's fine with us as long as that's good enough, if that's long enough for you all to study the budget. We just want to make sure that, that you all have ample time to get the minutes, to memorize yourself with the budget. But that's, yeah, that's fine with us.
Yeah, it's two weeks away, so it should give us ample time. Does anybody else? Bobby, you good? Steve?
Should be.
You're good.
23rd. Always try to give everybody plenty of time.
April 23rd.
At what time?
Yes, sir. At what time?
5:30.
Okay, thank you, sir. That's all I have.
2:35.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Council, for working with me.
You don't want to stay working.
Some of us are working.
I think Alderman Profit has something he want, he would like to say.
Usually every time I, if anything gets through, if I see something positive going on in our city, and I think I speak forever, Alderman, we're on the same page with it. And I was wanting to compliment the Parks and Recreation Department. I was at a function they had over at City Park about a week or two ago and all these people from out of town, and they looked and they said, well, we wish that our city had a park like this. I wished our city would keep up the park like this. And I just thought that was a good testament, Mr. Tim, for what y'all did. And I'd also like to thank Alderman Steve Smith, and he worked with the Parks and Rec, and I didn't even know what was going on with it, but they named a pavilion in Bryant Town after my nephew Logan Profit, little boy that passed away, passed grandson. And that meant a lot to the family. And I just wanted to tell you, Steve, I appreciate you doing that. He was always had a smile on his face and always a tight person. His life never was, never did develop. But he's in heaven now and they got a little playground up there for him, a pavilion, and I want to tell you, thank you all. Thank you, Steve.
Okay. Now, appointment of board commissions and committees. Item A, discussion of Newport Utilities Board, Donald Large. Glenn, is that you?
No, sir. Well, that, if, for those of you that were here at the time, about four years ago, it was voted by council and sent to Nashville and approved by the legislature to do a charter change that would reduce the number of INUB members to, from seven to five. And it was to be done by attrition. And it specifically named the members that would roll off and when they would roll off. And Don Large's term is up in this month, in April. And in that legislation, it was specified that when Mr. Large's time was up, that that position would cease to exist and that that would get the board down to five as was required by the, the new statute. And so, that was just basically, just needed to be announced.
Okay. Excuse me. My apologies, Glenn.
He's got one.
You can take care of me with some time.
Reports from committees, members of council, and other officers. Item A, Tanner Preservation Alliance.
There will be a pre-bid, or, yeah, pre-bid meeting tomorrow at 2:30 at the Tanner Building. The potential bidders are going to come and have a look around and hopefully see good things and inexpensive things that they can fix. And the bids are due in April the 30th. So, come May council meeting, you all will be making the decision on what contractor we go with to reopen the Tanner Building. And that's where we're at on that.
Time is at 2:30.
Thank you, Gary. An old unfinished business to move on to new business. And consideration of resolution number 2019-02 to rename RGE Boulevard to Coke Boulevard, creating a continuation of such that adjoins the current Kimwood Drive.
At the moment, Coke Boulevard starts at the intersection where Logan Credit and the Marathon Gas Station are with Broadway. And it turns into RG Boulevard around, on the curve. It's not actually a turn or stop. And it's now RG E Boulevard all the way to Kimwood. Just for the sake of logic and common sense, I would like to recommend that we rename the part of the road that's RG'd so it's Coke all the way down to Kimwood.
Need a motion? Need a motion? Yeah.
I make a motion. We've changed the name.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to change the name of RGE Boulevard to Coke Boulevard. It's been properly seconded, will approve by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item B, consideration resolution number 2019-03 authorizing the extension of its 14.5 million dollar electric system revenue bond anticipation note, series 2017.
This one is me. So, you guys, I think you have the written off resolution in your packet.
Yes.
So, approval of this resolution is just for an extension in the due date. And that's a good thing because we have basically underspent by proficiently managing the cost. And so, there's no need to pay the note back yet. This is a simple extension of the note due date.
Okay.
Page D.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve resolution number 2019-03 authorizing the extension of its 14.5 million dollar electric system revenue bond anticipation note, series 2017. It's been properly seconded, will approve by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed.
Then I hear a lot of good comments about that, too. So, I appreciate what y'all are doing. We got some representation here and I appreciate what y'all are doing.
Thank you.
I'm going to stay up there, I guess. Item C, consideration of increased compensation for the Newport Utilities Board.
I sent some information to the council and I can kind of read that same information for you. The, currently, our NU board is compensated as follows since the early 90s. The board chair receives 300 a month compensation. The secretary receives 280 a month and the general members receive 250 a month. I also listed at the bottom of the information sheet I sent you guys what other boards' examples are for board members and I won't go through and read every one of those, but I think it's pretty obvious that we're not even close to matching what the other board members for other utilities are receiving for their services. So, what I'm asking for is to increase our utility board's level of compensation for our electric, water, sewer, and broadband services that they support to a new compensation amount of the board chair, 450 a month, the secretary, 425 a month, and the general members to 400 a month. And that puts us at the minimum of our surrounding of the utility boards.
You're really not asking for new money. You're just taking the money from the last three board members and giving it to, passing it on down.
If you just do the math, the fact that we're down to five, what we're spending for our board members with this new compensation is about what we're spending for seven board members. It's just a few pennies difference.
Good discussion. We entertain a motion.
I make a motion. We grant the raise that's long overdue. I make a motion.
I'll second.
Right, we have a motion on the board to approve the increase in compensation for Newport Utility Board, amount of board chair for $450 a month, secretary for 25 a month, and members for $100 a month. It's been properly seconded, approved by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed.
Nay.
Item A, motion carries.
Thank you. Mayor, if I could, I'd just like to interject a little something here. I know it's never an easy topic to talk about, but the, the last time that the board of Mayor and Alderman received any increase in their compensation, to the best of my knowledge, was in 1993. And that's, that's almost 26 years ago. And certainly, I, I think that the NU board deserves more money for what they do. I think anybody that takes on the responsibility of trying to run a business or corporation or whatever and has to put up with all the aggravation that you have to put up with, you never get paid what, what the aggravation is worth. But I think that you all need to seriously consider looking at increasing the compensation for the board of Mayor and Alderman. Sir, I haven't done any kind of research on who makes what. I mean, it runs the gamut. I've talked to some over the years and some, some make really good and some just completely volunteer. So, I mean, it's not like, well, these people make this much, so we should. But I think when you look at the, the level of commitment that you guys have to make, the, all the driving that you do, the places you have to go, the, all the, the grand openings and the ribbon cuttings and the other boards that you go to and sit in on for the small amount that you guys get, I, I personally think, and I've been, I've been kind of preaching this for the last several years, and I know it's tough for you guys to, to sit there and say, well, I want to give myself a raise. And I admire you for that. But, but I, I think that, that honestly, that the board should, should make more than what it does. And I think you should seriously consider increasing the amount that, that you guys get as well. I know this has already been done and it was much deserved, but, and not to take anything at all away from it, but I, I don't think that anybody that you appoint should be making more than you do when you do appoint them. So, that would, that, that puts them at an increase above and beyond what you guys make. And I, I feel like you deserve at least as much if, if you're going to appoint people that's going to be paid and compensated an amount for, to serve on a board. It's not like it's a full-time job. But I, and even beyond the fact that they got anything, I've said for years that the council and the mayor needs to make more money than what they do, but far beyond what you make, in my opinion, because I know what you put up with. But I think you should seriously consider that. And I know it's always a tough issue and I know it's, it's rarely publicly well-received by some of the public, the taxpayers, because they say, well, you knew what it paid when you took it. But that's beside the point. I don't think anybody wants to do something forever and never get a raise for it. And like I say, it's been 26 years since any raise was given to, to the board. And I think that needs to be seriously considered. And I have no vote, but, but I, I think it should have.
We have, did that matter?
Well, no, it's not on, I mean, you'd have to spend
It's not on the agenda. It's not on the agenda. And I think because we haven't done any due diligence in terms of surveying other boards or councils, I think we probably need to do that first before we really consider that. Any other comments from the council? But I think we can put it on the agenda for next month's meeting and, in public forum and see where it goes from there.
Mayor, I just like to say, this gentleman, my no vote was in no way, personally, it's just I, I felt like I would need to vote my conscience on it.
Noted. Okay, item D, consideration of hiring a firefighter.
Thank you, Mayor. This position, we, we had a, and back in February, we had a firefighter resign due to having some family issues that he really needed to take care of and wasn't, he was taking more time away from that issue. So, he had to resign at, back in February. So, our civil service board, Willie and Mr. Calf and Mr. Green are back there now. They already went through the testing process right now. William Smallwood is the top of the list to be hired and that's what we're asking. We're not asking for a new firefighter. We're asking for a replacement for the one that resigned back in February.
Chief Reagan, I want to comment on the board. I think they do a good job. I think that they really take their time and, and survey this on down. I think they made a good selection. I think you've got a good list of several more. I don't think you're going to have to do this for a while because you had like 11 people if I'm right.
Yes, sir. We are very comfortable with this.
And you've got it comfortable for a while, but I feel like the time y'all put in, so I appreciate what y'all did, too. Think you made a good selection of this one, too. Y'all have every time.
Well, Mr. Smallwood, he has many years of experience. Most people in here know William. But even with that said, he will still have to do some training to, to be on the same page as our firefighters that we have now. So, that's where, that's where we're at.
Mr. Smallwood here.
Yes, sir. He's right here.
Okay, you entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to hire Mr. Smallwood.
I'll second it.
Okay, that's quick. Okay, we have motion on the board to, on consideration of hiring Mr. Smallwood as firefighter to replace the one that was lost in February. It's been properly seconded, approved by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And nays have the same right. Hearing none, any discussion? Motion carries.
Mr. Smallwood, I would hope you glad to learn how to fight city fires to the county fire, okay?
There's a difference.
Thank you all very much. Y'all, y'all were very supportive of us.
Thank you, Glenn. Now, to bids, purchases, and expenses. Item A, consideration of bids for filtration system for the City Park Pool.
Yes, sir. At the end of last season, our filtration system had a blowout. And of course, we went through the process and have submitted a bid to you guys this year through Duffield's, and that is the amount that we need to put that filtration system in. Hope you approve it. It's a 12-week summer. It's a 280,000 gallon pool that we have to regulate to meet state standards. And the, this filtration system meets all the specs that we need for that, that City Park Pool.
Tim, how long, Mount Duskin, how long, how old is the old filtration system?
It is Mickey Powers. Everybody knows Coach Powers at Newport Grammar School. He was the pool manager. It has been in there for 27 years.
And hopefully, the new one will last that long, too.
You can't do that to it. It's got to be in there, don't it?
Today's technology, it should be better. When Steve worked there, like you mentioned earlier, there wasn't a filtration system.
No. He was off. Everybody walked around with green hair.
And I guess everybody's seen the cost of the repair, $24,800. Was this bid or was it just?
It was bid through the, through our local and of course, we send information to our pool supply vendors that are out there. Duffield's is a company that, 27 years ago, that put that filtration system in. And I think it's a, maybe just a little bit more. That might be just for the filters.
Yes.
And that's not including the installation, so.
Grand total is around 45, under 45,000.
How much?
Under 45,000.
Okay, yeah, I'm looking at humidifier. Okay. That's what I was saying.
That's an important factor, too.
You didn't correct me.
I got to have clarity. Over there's the money. I got to have Claire to go, there's the money.
He was on the third.
Amen, amen.
My bad. Okay, the, how much, 42, 42, 3? 42, 3, okay. And it's in the capital budget?
This will actually need a budget amendment, we did not anticipate this one, no. Not this one. And what I understand, the pool can't open without it, that's why.
State regulations with the Health Department is that we snuck by last season at the end when it blew up, and this year, our inspector, Mr. Casey Hicks, has already informed me that we better have that filtration system in by the 25th, because that's opening day of May.
Is there enough time to get it installed and working?
Timing is crucial for us, tomorrow, we will, after we, if you guys approve, we will submit our PO, because we don't move forward without a PO, and tomorrow, it'll take about six weeks to build it, and come the 15th of May, we should be operational.
So, apparently we get to have a motion for a budget amendment first, prior to voting on this? No?
We can go ahead and first the bid.
This is written together, can it be done with one motion?
It could.
Okay, all right. All right, we have a, we have a motion, we entertain a motion to approve this purchase.
Make a motion. Second.
All right, we have a motion on the board to approve the purchase of the, what do you call it again?
And that motion, also, the motion to amend the budget for that amount, we'll have to have a second reading on that, but that, we'll do that.
You do that the next, at the next council meeting. Okay, question amend, not amendment, I'm sorry, we have a motion on the board to approve the purchase of the, what is that thing? Filtration system for the city park pool.
And the budget.
And the budget amendment of, of $45,000, we need a motion to?
You made the motion.
You made the motion, do we have a second?
Yes.
We have a second, okay, it's been properly seconded, will approve by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Hearing none, any discussion? Motion carries.
Thank you, Council, Mayor. Kids can't bear the pull, you'll have unhappy kids and unhappy parents, and you'll have unhappy council members.
Keep your babysitter job at hand, you better get him over.
The teenagers love it, so, 7,000 people and family period, it's amazing.
Okay, we now have time for comments from citizens. Make one more request, comments from citizens. Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn, it's properly seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?